So we're just on audio right now, but... So this is Basalt Town Council Work Session with our BAC Committee, Basalt Affordable Housing Committee. And so I really thank you guys because the main committee members have been you two. And so Kathy Click and Doug McDonald, I really thank you because you guys have been heading this up. And it's something that the community of Basalt, you know, it's such an important part of our community is to have a diversity of people living here. And so I really appreciate it. So with that, I'll turn it over to Susan Orion to kick it off.
Sure. Well, actually, this is really, the purpose of this meeting is really to hear from BAC. And Kathy and Doug are kind of going to take the lead on that and just kind of walk us through some of the ideas that Kathy had included in her letter to the council.
Which you have in front of you. And I think that, you know, where we want to go as an advisory committee to the council is we are in an advisory-only role. We don't have a budget item. We are not, we are not charged with building housing. We're really charged at looking at ideas and ways that we can put the, put ideas forward to the town, review proposals that come before the town, and maybe think of some things that might be a little bit out of the box or not development-driven to accommodate affordable housing. So we're really trying to look at big picture. What causes it? Who we're housing? How many units we're building? And, and, and that's kind of, that's my introduction.
Well, did you, did you say, I mean, I read your letter and I have it here. Did you put those in priority or you just threw them all out there and they're all high priority?
They're not really in priority. But, you know, some lead to other things. So reviewing, you know, reviewing our role, we're about 10 years in, maybe a little longer. And so, you know, we need to, I think, hearing from the board and getting support from the board for continuing in this advisory-only role is important for us as we are recruiting new, new participants and also as we go forward with our limited role of the things that we do and review, et cetera. Also, we have this multi-jurisdictional housing authority looming out there. And so we're going to need to have some kind of idea about where you guys are thinking about taking that as well and how we can participate as a town or as BAC in that process.
To focus on this lack of budget, one of the items on here talks about money. And, but that would be our advice, and we haven't, don't have a formal proposal yet, but potentially advice to council to consider establishing a budget for affordable housing. Not to support the committee because we don't have expenses for what we do right now, but to support the housing initiative. And we need to think about innovative ways that a little bit of town money can be turned into a lot of final development. So again, that's one of the significant points that we want to talk about as 2019 goes along.
Okay. So for the, I mean, I see the first one is reviewing the mission of BAC and BAC's roles of referral committee. Have you felt like you've had say in?
I think so. I mean, overall, yes, but that's our kind of reactive position. That's, that's really, you know, once something, a project is put through and is going to P&amp;Z, then, you know, we sort of get an opportunity to look at it. We develop those livability standards, so we impose the livability standards on the project and see if it's actually measuring up, where we can be flexible, where we feel like we can't be flexible. That's happened a couple of times in the last year. And I think we had some positive impact on those final proposals. So yes, I think, I mean, I think that we are relevant, definitely we're relevant. And I'm, so far, I think we've been well-received by the council. And certainly because we have staff support, you know, the staff really helps us develop those tools that we've been using.
Well, I mean, do you guys, either Bill or Ryan, have, I mean, I know our whole affordable housing is always on our mind with almost everything we do. And I think the, when we update this master plan over the next year, I think one of the biggest things we need to incorporate in that master plan is a way to look at affordable housing potentially in a different way. And so I think we've been very organic and opportunistic to get the affordable housing that we've gotten. But I think we, I personally, this is my feeling, is that we need to be more strategic in how we develop that master plan to really potentially move forward with projects that potentially we can get a private-public partnership to be part of. Because we've seen some, you know, the Royston Apartments and even that transit-oriented development on the other side. We've seen some movement on being able to come up with unique ways of affordable housing. You know, Ski Company is starting to generate ideas on how to invigorate a building in Lilits. And so, but how do we work together as a community to really design it in a way that works for everybody?
You know, Gary, addressing that, that when you say work together as a community, I, that, that was put into fairly sharp focus in this article in The Post about the housing hurdles. And they had a forum there that was led by this fellow, Clark Anderson, from Community Developers. And they gave us the same kind of issues that we had, more or less, and the challenges. But in the end, it came to, well, if we're going to provide more housing, it needs, means we need to build more. And building more is always an issue with the community because there's pushback on different kinds of developments. So I think one of the things that we need to focus on when we look at, you know, input to the master plan is maybe new, new types of acceptable building types that we will have to locate in the town of Basalt if we're going to put in more housing. We just, we need to be innovative and we need, we need to make it community-friendly. We can't just put up apartment houses all over. Nobody's going to buy that. So it's something, it's going to be something different for us, I guess. That's, that's what I'm thinking.
And I think having some kind of guidance from the council as to your, the overall philosophy of how the town wants to approach this ongoing issue. We're never going to build ourselves out of affordable housing needs. That's not going to happen. So through the master plan, we definitely would love to be a part of, an official part of how those hearings and those conversations take place. But we need to establish a philosophy about affordable housing, how, how we're going to address it. Right now, how we're addressing it is we're, we're requiring affordable housing units out of developments. And is that going to be our long-term answer? And in that case, the only way we're going to get more affordable units is if we have more development. We have more development, we're going to need more units. That's held up by every housing study that we've ever had, including the one that just came out. So I think that, I think the philosophical underpinnings are the things that we're also looking for. Not us coming to you and saying, well, we did this, but, you know, what do y'all think about, you know, where, what we should be focusing on?
Bill?
Got a couple of thoughts. And probably beginning with the notion of coordination across the variety of jurisdictions in our valley. And we are confronting a valley-wide problem. It's not a Basalt problem. And in the kind of eight months that have been on council, or seven months, we have addressed this as a uniquely Basalt problem and tried to solve the problem in, within our own town boundaries. And I think that's probably going to result in a lot of frustration, as it has. Carrie Donovan, last week, when she addressed kind of the six or so folks who showed up at the library, called for greater coordination, not only in our valley, but in others as well, that are confronting similar challenges. And I think there's a lot to be gained from better coordination, communication with Aspen, Snowmass, Scarborough, Glenwood, but then also the three counties that are involved and the state potentially as well. And I haven't, I'm aware that there's some discussion, but probably not as much as there could be, given the magnitude of the problem. So whether that is a BAC initiative that you would lead, which I would say probably could be, but that again, will come back to council to agree to ascribe the mandate and authority to you to reach out and have those conversations. And it's that mandate that has been somewhat ambiguous, not only with BAC, but with other committees. You know, what's the role and responsibility? Can you reach out and proactively initiate dialogue or not? I'd suggest that you should. You guys are the experts. So if you can bring back great ideas from conversation with other jurisdictions, that would be great. This thing about motivating other public-private partnerships, again, I think Basalt Vista has got an increasing number of fathers. It's extraordinary. I sat at Northwest COG between Patty Clapper and Jeanne McLeaney, and both of them were enthusiastic beyond belief, and Jeanne didn't even really have a dog in the fight. She's on the other side of the line. But nevertheless, she's looking at this as a really important development in our community. And I'm pretty confident that the Habitat folks have their eye on a number of other projects that we probably might want to support. And it depends at what level, whether we're targeting C1, C2, C3, or how we see that moving forward. But I think Habitat provides us with a very, very powerful model that I would love to see us do more of, not only with Habitat, but with others. And I guess finally, Doug, the notion of having funds set aside, it kind of depends for what. Talking about the philosophy, I am philosophically not in favor of town ownership of affordable housing. The private sector does this. In 2018, we lost money net-net on our affordable housing. The rent didn't cover the cost, not including interest expense and not including the imputed value or the inferred value of labor. So that's just a bad deal. Now, that's why we're moving forward, to sell the seven Snowmass units, which will be great, because that is perhaps where some of the, the, the cost resides, or the disproportionate or marginally greater cost resides. But I am very much in favor of using public funds in creative ways to incentivize the private sector to build and then rent and operate. So if we're talking about buying down deed restrictions for interest, for, for instance, this is something that a lot of other communities have done. Kathy Chamberlain has talked about this a lot in the context of, it's either an Igor or an Edwards project. And that makes a lot of sense to me, because then the private sector owns it, they're going to deal with all the headaches of operating, managing, and bear all of that risk. But the town made it happen. And I would argue that we might want to consider doing something similar. And we will also want to consider using the tools that we have to waive nuisance fees and taxes. So to the extent that we can use those things that are available to us, I think we can do an awful lot to inspire private-public partnerships that will result in more affordable housing. But ownership, I just, I don't see going down that route as being particularly promising.
That all makes sense to me. I do want to pick up on the valley-wide approach a little bit. I've been trying to think about how many ways that could, that really would make a difference. Right now, as the housing study has said, what the difference it makes is that some communities provide workers and other communities provide jobs. And so we have the travel problem, which was really highlighted here also in this article in The Post, when they described this new index, it's news to me, the H plus T index, meaning not the, the, the cost of housing, but housing plus travel. And it was amazing that there, the quotum here to say that a family's mortgage payment should not exceed 30% of the household income is a familiar standard, but if you use housing and travel, it's 45% of your income. That was huge. I mean, that, that really stunned me. And so we need to think a little bit more broadly about how valuable it is to have housing in the community where people work.
Work closer, closer to transit and then finding ways to fund the transit piece. Because, yeah, the cost of transit is pretty high. Yeah. I mean, I think the direction that personally for you, for me, for BAC is to continue being a really strong proponent of affordable housing. And, and I do feel like we could give you some more latitude to be part of this regional approach. I have no interest in attending all these myself all the time. You guys are working on it for the town. You've been working on the housing needs assessment for the town. I think I, and you'd hear it from Bill, and I don't know about Ryan, but, you know, from my perspective, this is what we should be giving BAC and the members of BAC latitude to do, is to really do that and bring back to us the ideas from the regional area, but knowing that you do have some charge from the council to find a way to figure it all out. I mean, because I think, you know, we've been relatively successful in developing new affordable housing. And I think we should take some, you know, just take that as success and be happy with Vista and the Royston Apartments and, and, you know, and some of the other affordable housing pieces that we're doing. But how we do it regionally, I think, trying to find ways to partner with Eagle County to get some of their affordable housing money over here is going to be critically important going forward. And, you know, I, I'd like to charge you guys with that and, and basically feel like you, we have your back to go out there and participate in these things and actually, you know, find ways to engage not only the other regional areas, but also the business community in finding ways to, you know, because, I mean, Ryan was talking about it earlier, is we got to think about wages as part of this whole thing too, because affordable housing comes with what can you afford? And if the wages are extremely low for certain sectors of the economy, how are you going to ever afford housing? You would have to be heavily, heavily subsidized. And we're struggling to have enough money to even get some of it subsidized. So I think that's a really critical component going forward. So?
I think as the, you know, the, the master plan provides us a really great opportunity to participate and to, and to kind of flesh some of these things out. But I also think that there's a lot of communities and organizations out there that are looking at these same issues and coming up with some very creative solutions. Maybe not solutions long-term, but they're dealing with it in different kinds of ways. And I would love to have that opportunity to, you know, to bring those people in or visit those people or be in contact with some of those other proactive organizations that are really addressing it in a, in a completely different way. And I think, you know, build, build out of the valley floor is the way we're going to solve affordable housing. I don't think anybody wants that. And so, while I, I really appreciate the multi-jurisdictional regional plan, and I, I think that everybody talking together and working together to find some solutions is important, what I hope that doesn't lead to is that every vacant plot is bought and something's built on it, because we all are going to need housing, and so therefore, there it goes. So I would, and, and that's also, that's kind of a change from a citizen committee to be charged with actually researching and going out and, I mean, that's my impression, that of being very much more proactive as far as this, as far as affordable housing goes. That's, that's not necessarily our charge. I think that it could be something that we could, you know, not rely on the staff to provide us with examples and, you know, but maybe take it on more as the committee.
Well, that's why I would like to get you some more members, because it's just, I mean, you, you guys take it on a lot yourselves, and it's, it's difficult. But I think, you know, having a larger group of people to be able to split a lot of those duties. But I personally feel very comfortable with that charge, and I would love to hear that feedback and how we can do it. Because I do agree with you, I have concerns about trying to do a multi-jurisdictional housing authority, because when you start having Basalt Town Council and Glenwood City Council and, and Carbonell and Garfield County, and you start putting all of us together, you put seven, 14, 22 people in the room, with all of our parochial vision of our towns, it's going to be more difficult to get overall solutions. But I think we can learn from each other and potentially find ways to not develop the entire valley floor, to find ways to work with the municipalities to include it in their master plans, so they're not just building out to no end. Because I know the community will come unglued if we propose to build out everything. I mean, we just, we, it would just, you know, absolutely do it. But there's a lot of development that has been approved through the old model of certain amount of affordable housing and certain amount of free market. And if, are there ways to buy down some of that? If there, are there ways to, you know, find ways to make some of that more affordable? So, I don't know. I, I feel comfortable with that. And I think you heard from two of us, and I don't know where Ryan sits on that one, but?
No, I appreciate all you guys have done, and I encourage you to continue what you're doing, because it's a great asset for us at council. Like Gary said, we can't be everywhere. We can't do everything at once. And we take what you guys tell us, you know, not as gospel, but as a very educated and well-thought-up ideas.
So one thing that occurs to us is that, again, dovetailing with the master plan idea, is that, you know, maybe we're going to have to look at some zoning issues and some, some regulations regarding lot size, unit size, but also maybe even, you know, some kind of restrictive zoning that ensures that units stay affordable in the long term, whether they're, they're officially affordable housing or not. So, I mean, that's one place where we go. And I would also like to address Bill's incredible overconfidence in our abilities by saying that we're the experts. We are really, you know, we're just, we're community members, just like you. I don't have any background in housing or development, and I don't think Doug does either. But it's, it's the idea that you, you know, you put this kind of time in for your community and trying to, to come up with some solutions that really address those issues, also by being creative and, and not reinventing the wheel, but coming up with some new stuff. So thank you, but I defer.
Still, you still have my faith and confidence. But again, coming out of a couple different structures where you try to organize a lot of different players, now, I, I agree, if we're trying to solve a problem with the handful, two handfuls of jurisdictions, that's going to lead to paralysis and a ton of frustration. But at the same time, I'm awfully struck by the stuff that's going on even in Elgbell in our valley, that the Crawfords and grandson Hubbell are spearheading. And that's incredibly valuable housing for a lower-tier, the 30% AMI market, which is really fantastic. And coordinating our own efforts so that we do have different strata of housing, I think is going to be important. We do want to have the service sector of our economy able to afford housing. But if we're also trying to attract knowledge and ideas-based industries with a young, whatever, white-collar cohort, then that's probably going to be a C2 or a C3, which, according to the housing study, we need 57 units across all strata. So it's not like we're going to solve the problem with the eight units that we're putting in over in Block 525. I mean, we're, we're not going to exhaust the, the demand. But the, the thing that I would love to see you guys do, because as Gary said, nobody has time to go to every meeting, but if we kind of divide and conquer, then that would be very helpful. So having the, the BAC group even engage with some of the other coalitions that already exist, Northwest COG being one, they're always talking about housing issues, and there are always a million good ideas that we then don't have to reinvent. Had dinner the other night with one of the board members from ADLT, and we were batting ideas around about how we would ever use Section 8 type structures to finance housing down valley, but financed by Aspen. Aspen is the consumer of most of this labor that needs housing. But, you know, stepping back from the whole thing, affordable housing is a core component of our forthcoming strategy, and it can appear as a social inclusion element in that strategic objective, or an economic growth as that objective, or as infrastructure. Take your pick, it crosses all boundaries, but it is core to what we expect to, to accomplish going forward as well. And so, you know, referring you to that as well for not only the thinking that we've already done, but to enlist your ideas, you know, as that strategy moves forward and hopefully is approved.
Hi, Katie.
Hello.
I know you came late, but I want to make sure.
Yeah. I apologize for being late. And I wasn't here to hear Bill's comments about his strong faith in you, but I also have strong faith in you. Thank you.
So, I mean, the reality is, is I think you're hearing that we do want to, you guys have the support of council to go and, and really broaden just listening to P&amp;Z and trying to solve that. It's really to work with staff and the jurisdictions around us to see what else is out there. What, because now is a great time. We can include it in the master plan. You know, we have a, if we choose this firm, there's an affordable housing consultant part of it. So I think, you know, right now, I think, I hope you have our support. We do thank you. I do consider you guys experts, because you've been doing it for a really long time. And so, you know, it's, it's, you have a kind of a pulse on the community of affordable housing, so trying to take that and see where we can go with it. And I think you'll have, I mean, in this master plan, for me personally, I'm up to looking at rezoning. I'm up to looking at, you know, different ways of, of making it happen. You know, if you don't throw it out there, I think, you know, we're, we're going to lose out on some things. In 2007 master plan, when I was here, it was very reactive, to slow things down, slow things down. But now we're looking at it going, how do we incorporate other pieces of the community that we're really worried about? And, you know, trying to find ways to incorporate that. So I'm, I'm hoping, that's why we cast a large net, to try to catch, you know, planners from other places to, let's, let's think outside the box. And, because I, as we started this, we talked about the money won't be there. I don't think the money will be there after the master plan's updraft. So we've got to be pretty innovative on how we do this.
Okay, thank you. Well, I have one more thing to add.
Sure.
And that is that I think, and this is a twofold comment, because I'm not going to be able to stay for, a lot further into the meeting. But some of the creative, the creative projects that we've come up with, like Real America and the Vista Project, and even the Habitat single standing house in a existing residential neighborhood, were all things that Habitat, well, not the Royston Apartments, but the, the those things that Habitat is doing in our community are things they don't do in other communities. They don't like building a single house in an existing neighborhood, because then that house becomes the Habitat house. They don't necessarily work on public-private partnerships in other areas of the country because they have other resources available to them. So in that regard, I think that our partnership with Habitat has been incredible and is really valued. And I would, I'm just throwing out my personal support for their continued application to be the, have their golf tournament at the Royston Club in the fall. Because I think that what they give back to our community is, they, they're solving problems that we can't solve by ourselves, and they're doing it, and they're doing the work. And they're doing it, and they're doing the work.
Well, it's an innovative way of funding these things.
Yeah.
So, cool.
Oh, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Okay, so, what do we have next?
We have interviews. And we're going to interview Abby Gurkey first for BPAC, which is a Basalt Public Works Arts Commission. Watkins and Abby want to come on up. And Watkins is going to introduce us and we're going to follow this, but with a couple BAC interviews.
Okay.
So, and also just to kind of flag, we put a yellow sheet with...
I saw that.
...potential questions to kind of get your head around it. So, go ahead, Watkins.
I do have to flag my support for Abby. She was the one that helped us get the tiny library painted. So, I brought that over to Art Base and she was able to put together a little class around it and did artwork for it. So, ended up being a pretty cool thing. So, I've gotten to know her a little bit and certainly appreciated that and some of the other projects we've been talking about, so.
And if Abby is confirmed, she will be the, the one required member that, according to the ordinances established BPAC, one member is required to be from Wiley, which is now the Art Base. So, Abby applied and we're happy that she did. We also have one other application, which was from Humberto Sandoval. And he was not able to make it today. He was hoping to reschedule, but he had a work conflict and couldn't get down here this early. So, do you guys have any other, any questions for me before we turn it over, before I get out of the way?
And you maybe just point that Bear Matthews from BPAC is in the audience showing his support for our effort here.
That's right.
Cool. Well, I mean, I can make this one brief, because, yeah, it's, just give us a quick, you know, 60-second, 90-second, kind of why you want to be on this and what do you think you can bring.
Okay. I am living now and working in Basalt since May of last year and then September at the Art Base. And I'm interested in learning about local government and how decisions are made, especially because I'm a stakeholder in two ways here. I'm interested in the processes that happen here and I'm learning more about Basalt. I'm obviously here because I think art in public spaces is important.
Right. Anyone else have questions?
No. Thank you for applying.
No, I mean, to me, this is kind of a no-brainer, but we'll, I mean, really thank you for applying because we do want a local representative on this. And it's really nice to have town residents and people who are actually in the arts beyond this, so.
Great.
So, I think this will be easy. Anything?
Yes, a bunch of thoughts, but, you know, really pleased that you're throwing your hat in the ring and applying. That's wonderful. Thanks so much for contributing to our wonderful little town.
Thanks.
Getting back to our strategy, as I often do, our strategy has an economic core, an economic strategic objective, that has a bunch of intermediate results, one of which is to promote an arts-based economy. So, we'll definitely look forward to having your input on that. And arts, in this instance, isn't just about the visual. It could be musical, dramatic, theatrical, whatever you want to call art, as in the eye of the beholder. But it's hopefully going to be a sort, well, it will help Basalt become a destination that people will return to year after year for whatever function, event, or other special thing that they like about it. So, I certainly hope that BPAC is going to continue to inform that process and work with the incredible institutions that we have, meaning TACAA and Art Base and others that I hope will come along.
Great.
So, that's more of a comment.
Yeah, no, thanks for the input.
Right. Well, you know, we, I don't know when we make appointments, but...
It's later on the agenda, on the regular agenda.
Okay. And they'll let you know what we decide.
Okay.
It seems like you have a decent support from at least us four.
Great. Thanks.
Thank you, Abby.
Can all of them get on? Isn't there room for everyone that applied on this one?
We just can't do it, no.
Okay.
To vote.
Yeah.
I was just making sure.
Hi, me again. So, Sarah Dunley. I'm here to talk about the potential appointments for the Basalt Affordable Community Housing Group. We have three applicants. One was not able to be here today, that would be Rick Stevens. He has indicated that he is still interested. So, if council, you know, may decide to speak with him in the, in the future, we could arrange that. We do have Katie Erickson here today and Ann Baker, so we can bring them up one by one. Katie, if you'd like to, to come up. Katie is a mortgage lender at Bay Equity Home Loans in Basalt. She does reside in Carbonell, but works in the financial industry. So, per the ordinance is, is available or able to be assigned as a, as a member of BAC if you so choose.
Great. Hi, Katie.
Hi, everybody.
Thanks for coming in.
My pleasure.
So, if you could just, just tell us quickly about yourself and why you're interested in being on.
Yeah, absolutely. So, yeah, as you said, I live in Carbonell, but I've been working in downtown Basalt since about 2007, previously at a bank in the capacity of being a commercial lender manager overall. So, I've kind of been on that side as well. But I've been a mortgage lender for the last three years. And every single day, I'm either working with a deed-restricted property or someone that's getting pushed out of Glenwood now into Newcastle, Silt, all of those areas. And it's the constant struggle of getting people to be able to, you know, afford it here, or, you know, talking to the business owners as well, that says, it's just the turnover that they're constantly dealing with as a result of employees that can't live here and have to move elsewhere, or they have to get creative. And so, I just wanted to be able to take it one step further in, in the community that I'm always in and have been a part of for a long time, to say, what else can I do to help come up with solutions and, and other opportunities? And, yeah, mostly I work from Aspen to Glenwood for, for housing. And so, I've worked with lots of different deed restrictions, APCHA, Garfield County, all of those, and the Pickens County Program that they've recently rolled out with a deed restriction, which is a clever idea as well. So, very familiar with some of those ideas, too. So, I wanted just to be a, be a part of the community.
Cool. And so, do you have any ideas about affordable housing and how we, you know, could provide more of it or opportunities, different ways?
You know, not as a, I mean, nothing that I can say that's going to blow your mind right now, but, but definitely have seen what's worked well. I mean, also, I've, you know, done a lot with the Basalt Vista program and just knowing the, the amount of applicants. I was a preferred lender for that in the month of September when they were taking those in. I mean, there was, I had calls after calls of people trying to get in and only a few were selected, of course. And even trying to get people to qualify for those, in a lot of instances, was a stretch. And so, yeah, I don't, at this point, I don't, but I have a lot of input that I could give as far as when ideas also are being created to say, yeah, most likely they're going to be mortgages for this and not all properties and projects are, we can't lend on all of them. So, pairing that with it to say, this is good, or, you know, I mean, making the Basalt Vista Town Homes versus condos was something that we had encouraged them to do, which is good for, for lending. So, I mean, just those types of things can come in play as well.
Well, you blew my mind on that one, because I had no idea the difference between...
It's a big difference.
Yeah. I had no idea about that, the difference between those two.
Yeah. So, I mean, I don't have like a, the silver bullet to bring today, but I'd definitely like to bring in the, what I've seen in the valley for the last 15-plus years and working with housing.
Okay.
I think your knowledge will be extremely helpful, and I thank you for applying.
Anyone?
Thank you.
Welcome.
Well, thank you, Katie. And we're going to do this one, too, later. Perfect. So, we'll let you know. Thank you.
And then we have one more applicant. Ann Baker is here and she is a longtime resident of the town of Basalt. And I believe a retired registered nurse, is that correct?
That's right.
Thank you.
Great. Well, welcome and thanks for applying.
Oh, thank you.
And so, yeah, just if you want to explain why you want to be on the board and...
Well, as Sarah said, I was a longtime resident. I've been a part-time resident since the early 90s. And then about 2012, my husband and I decided that we'd make Colorado our home and Basalt our full-time home. So, that's what we have done. I'm interested in the affordable housing because I have been reading about all the contentious issues in Aspen with affordable housing. And a lot of them seem to revolve around who can stay after they have finished either their working life or their employment. And Basalt seems to have avoided those type of contentious issues. And I'd like to work on the BAC, with the BAC group, to see that that continues. And it seems to me that here in Basalt, we have the Roaring Fork Apartments, which are beautiful-looking. I think everybody likes them. They provide dignity for the people who live there. And I think if we could do more things like that. The Basalt Vista, there are only a few, as I guess Katie said, there are only, I think, nine families that are moving in right now. And that's great for those nine families, but there are a lot of other people either working in the schools as teachers or ancillary personnel that need some type of housing. So, my concern is with sort of the endpoint of affordable housing. What happens when somebody has been living in affordable housing for a long time? And as I said, either are finishing their working life or working someplace else. Can they stay in what they consider their home? And to prevent us becoming Aspen.
Right.
Any questions?
So, you see senior housing as a potential solution?
No, not so much. I see senior housing, and we've talked about that before, and they talked about having senior housing over by the high school. It's more having people stay in the home that they have been in and want to stay in.
Right. Cool.
And that's, I know, a real issue, because you need housing for younger people who are in the workforce.
Right. That's going to be a big issue going forward as more affordable housing gets created.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, cool. All right. Anything else? Anyone?
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, could I just ask one thing?
Sure.
You have seen my short letter that I wrote. On that short letter, I have all my contact points. If you could perhaps delete them from the, from the agenda or the minutes.
I think we could ask Pam to do that, right?
We'll talk to Pam and see, because we have it posted, but we just cross it off and post it on the web.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just thought, I looked at everyone else's and it's either just a phone number or an email. And I have my postal box, my street address, I have it all, so I...
Yeah, there's also the security number.
And my birthday.
Your birthday.
No, I don't have it on.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, we're adjourned.
Yeah.
We'll adjourn for 10 minutes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hi, everyone. Try to make that so you can hear me. I am your renter mayor for the night, and the mayor is out. But welcome to, this is Basalt Town Council. First, I want to thank Grassroots TV for being here and broadcasting our meetings live. You can watch tonight's meeting live or view previous council meetings online through the community government TV at grassrootstv.org. Our videographer this evening is Ryan O'Donnell. Hi, Ryan. And if Ryan yells "mic," he's just telling us to speak into the mics. And the mayor's coffee, since I'm the rent-a-mayor, I'm not going to do coffee tomorrow. She's in the town, so that will happen after the next town council meeting. So, Pam?
Are you ready for a roll call? Okay. Gary Tenenbaum.
Here.
Bill Infante. Katie Schwer.
Here.
Auden Schendler. Jennifer Ripple.
Present.
Hi, Jen.
Thank you, look at that.
And Ryan Slack.
Here.
Thank you. And we know Mayor Witzit is absent this evening as well. Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor Protem. There's one amendment to the agenda to add an executive session, an additional executive session under CRS 2464024B, for the purposes of meeting with the town attorney to discuss taper restrictions. So, if we could get a motion to amend the agenda to include that executive session, now would be the time.
Okay. Anyone?
Some, second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? All right. Okay. Now, we get to the fun part. Anything else? No? Great. So, tonight, we'll start out with, our favorite part of the agenda is the Students Citizens of the Month from Basalt Public Schools. And the awards are based on the six pillars of character. And in February, we're going to, the pillar of character we're talking about is caring. So, this is, caring is being kind, being compassionate, and show you care, express gratitude, forgive others, and help people in need. So, seems like we have a lot of people here, which is really cool. You'll probably stay for the entire meeting, of course. So, we have all passed out certain students. So, when we call you up, if you can come kind of upfront, I know it's really embarrassing, but if you can come upfront and, when you're called, and be in front of the person that's reading, it'd be great. So, start off with Bill.
Sure. I would love to honor Sophia Rosales.
You can come with her.
Hey, Sophia.
Oh, she's over there.
That's my daughter's name, too, by the way.
Watch your steps.
Yeah, go around step.
Good stop, brother.
Okay. Sophia Rosales is a sweet, caring student to the teachers and peers who she works with on a regular basis. She shares and helps other children around her. She treats everyone with love and respect. When other children need help in the class, she gives them support and shows them the correct way. She shows empathy and concern for others' feelings. She is the kind to all her peers and teachers in the classroom. It is a joy to have Sophia in our classroom. It's a joy having her in Basalt.
Okay. Let's see. Lexi Glenn. Lexi. Hi. Basalt High School Junior Lexi Glenn has demonstrated an amazing capacity for compassion and kindness over the past month and a half. She has worked tirelessly alongside me to make the fundraiser for Anna Cunningham a success. Without her help, BHS would not have raised as much money as we have. Her compassion and kindness have been extraordinary during a time that she is struggling with her own emotions as she faces the approaching loss of her close friend. Lexi is truly a delight, and I can't think of a more deserving person of this recognition. This was written by Brent Hayes, your science teacher.
So, actually, Bill has two. Perfect.
There you go.
Yeah, come on over here.
Just watch out for all the cords.
All right. Milton is a very sweet young boy who has grown to become generous and a supportive classmate. He has demonstrated to be caring and compassionate towards his peers. He is a cooperative child who will always follow directions and help others around him do the same. He is a good role model. It is a pleasure to have Milton in the classroom.
It is a pleasure to have Milton in the classroom.
Kathryn Koch. Kathryn is an extremely caring student. She is always willing to help others and work with anyone. She is very genuine and is a true friend. Her teachers love her positive attitude and wonderful smile.
And I get Jim Rowley. So Jim is an excellent example of a caring, considerate student. He is very helpful in the classroom and an excellent role model for other students. Jim can always be counted on to treat people with kindness and respect. Thanks. So if, we have, first of all, everyone who got Student of the Month gets a free pool pass. And so your name will be on the pool pass, so it'll be great. And then secondly, we have a proclamation tonight. If everyone could hang out while we do the proclamation, that would be really great. It's a proclamation honoring exemplary citizenship and recognizing an outstanding community member. And this is going to be really difficult because it's for Anna Cunningham. So I'm going to pass it around, see if we can all get through this.
However effective government may be in serving the needs of its citizens, the character of our town depends on the relationships of our citizens, families, friends, neighbors. And strengthening those bonds lies in the hearts of the people, individuals who participate to help create a living, thriving community. These citizens are the unrecognized, unsung heroes of our town, and the town of Basalt is honoring Anna Cunningham, a brave young woman, community member, student, and outstanding citizen in the town of Basalt.
Whereas Anna was diagnosed in March 2016 with a rare childhood cancer, Ewing sarcoma. Since that time, Anna has fought hard, exhibiting extraordinary strength and courage. Anna embodies the values that Basaltines hold dear: respect, honesty, bright-spirited optimism, and commitment. Friends describe Anna as the most kind, friendly, and loving person, who at age 16 years of, or at 16 years of age, has gone through more battles than most people go through a lifetime. Anna radiates nothing but happiness and joy. She's an exceptional young woman.
Whereas Anna's teachers know that over the past two years, in the face of formidable challenges, Anna has remained calm and kind and persevered in extraordinary commitment to her schoolwork. She wants to be treated like everyone else, because to be treated otherwise would have made her stand out, and that is not her style. She has handed setbacks over the years, and it is right and fitting that such an individual, from whom we call, from whom we can all learn valuable lessons, be honored and...
Whereas, as great testimony of her humility and selflessness, Anna's mom remembers that. One of Anna's dreams is that no other child has to suffer from this disease. When she was first diagnosed, she said, "Three in a million kids get this. Well, I'm glad that it's me, so no other child had to have it." That so many teachers, students, and community members have stepped up to contribute and support the fight against cancer and Ewing sarcoma is testament to the powerful rallying cry that Anna has issued that will help fund childhood cancer research and may yield the breakthrough that saves others from this disease.
Second to last. So whereas the town of Basalt is most fortunate to have Anna Cunningham as a community member, the town of Basalt salutes the bravery and courage that Anna has exhibited in her fight against cancer. She's a model for family, friends, and peers. Anna epitomizes the spirit of Basalt. Anna has persevered courageously and proudly. Anna has inspired the Basalt, and Basalt High School communities to come together, rallying behind a cause, and as a result, we all share a stronger sense of belonging. We are sincerely grateful to Anna Cunningham and hereby publicly acknowledge her many contributions to the community of Basalt, Colorado. Therefore, we, the Basalt Town Council, proclaim February 27, 2019 to be the Anna Cunningham Day and further recognize that the town of Basalt is a far, far better place by the role model and deeds of Anna Cunningham. So I didn't know if anyone wanted to say anything who is here. On behalf of this, you don't have to. But if you want to, it's on TV and it's being streamed, so feel free to come on up. You can come up to a microphone and speak. Anyone?
Hi. My name's Debbie Braun, and Anna's been in our lives, oh, since my daughter McKinley was in seventh or eighth grade. They became fast friends. My daughter is out on Rotary Exchange right now in Germany and can't be with Anna here at the end. So she sent a text today that I would like to publicly read because she just wanted to give some love to her best friend. And I hope this is PG-13. Have you ever looked at someone in the eyes, not knowing who they were, and just knew that you were meant to be best friends? That's me and you, because I'm Mexican and you're my one and only. It's a little joke they had. You know I love you. You know that. Everyone knows that. Everyone may know that your favorite color is yellow. You love cats, and your favorite animals are sheep. But what people don't know about you is your favorite food is pasta. Your favorite song is Sweet But Psycho. Your favorite subject is anatomy. Dinner is your favorite meal of the day. Your favorite name is Patricia. Your favorite candies are Rolos. Your favorite things to do in your free time is watching Harry Potter. And your favorite word is "ho." Sorry. But I know that. I'll always know that. It's something that just comes easy, because you know, you should know you're my sister, right? And you're my sister, always have been, always will be. I'm so sorry I can't be with you right now, Anna. I'm so sorry. But I'll always be with you, and I know you'll always be with me, because Anna, goodbyes are only for those who love with their eyes, because of those who love with their heart and soul. There's no thing, no such thing as separation, and I definitely love you with all my heart and soul. P.S. You're the good one, and I'll finally give that to you.
Thank you for letting me read that.
Anyone else? Okay. Well, thank you, and this is a very difficult thing. And tomorrow will be Anna Cunningham's Day, so, in the town of Basalt. So, thank you all for coming. And for the Students of the Month, there'll be a picture outside. And otherwise, you're more than welcome to hang out for the rest of the council meeting, if you want.
Lexi, would you take this together?
Yes.
Thanks, everyone.
Hello, hello.
You can have it. I don't use pens. I really have been trying to get away from paper.
Yeah.
Now, she's...
I've been so done to get away.
Special person. I'll tell you.
Nope.
Good job holding it together, team.
Yeah. That's holding it together. Not easy. No, thanks, but it's... Okay. So, we're on the, well, where'd Pam go?
I think she's coming.
Is she coming back? We're all crying for you, Tim.
Five minutes earlier, you would have gotten past...
You would have been crying, too. So next up is the Consent Agenda. It's the minutes, February 12, 2019, and Resolution Number Six, Series 219. The Town Council of Town approving an agreement for professional services with O'Kannon Associates to provide audit services for the 2018 calendar year. Are we okay with that being on the consent agenda?
Yes. Mayor, I move that the Town Council approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Okay. Next up is a call to the public. So I don't see much public here, besides people who are here for the agenda. But if anyone wants to make a public comment for items not on the agenda, please do so. Don't see it. Okay, so the next up is positive comments and gratitudes about Basalt. I personally feel that what we just did before you guys showed up was an incredibly positive thing for the town of Basalt. It's an extremely sad thing, but what I've seen in the Basalt community is people really rallying around a cause. And really, you know, the amount of people that I see around with shaved heads is pretty impressive. And hopefully, they raise a ton of money for, to really try to find a way to end Ewing sarcoma, because it seems pretty nasty. So that's my positive about Basalt. Anyone else?
I'd love to share, I got a text from a neighbor today who said, "Whoever's out there that fills up the potholes, you are an amazing leprechaun. Thank you so much for doing it." And so I want to give that out to Public Works for getting on top of our free thought cycle that is going strong this winter. I'm grateful for it, and I'm also grateful for their efforts in getting on top of that.
All right. Anyone else? Okay. Mayor and council reports. Anyone comments?
I met this last week with Ryan and Christie, and again, thank you so much for your integrity and stick-with-it-ness that you are providing to the town. It's phenomenal, and so grateful, and want to recognize. Yes.
Two things. Ryan and I were, joined Anne Scott and her board over at the library midweek last week. And they presented some of the research that they had done about the kinds of things that the community is looking for from their library. And we shared kind of the direction that we're headed and suggested that we communicate a little bit more frequently and actively. And so the suggestion, after you took off, Ryan, was perhaps to invite the library in, when it's appropriate and reasonable, to do a presentation in the same way that our committees and the Basalt Chamber do, since they are a super important part of our community and they deliver some really great services. And so I'd like to suggest that we invite them when there is time free in the calendar, whenever that may be, to, again, exchange thoughts, views about what our library can do for us and what we can do for our library.
That work for everyone?
Yep. Then the only other thing, we had our three state, or three of our state reps came up on Saturday morning and presented over at the library to what was a surprisingly large crowd, given it was a powder day with bluebird skies. But there were probably about 60 folks, which was awfully good. And they're, they laid out kind of their strategies, which are fairly consistent. Many of them are looking at affordable housing, education. Healthcare was a massive topic. Some were looking at environmental quality, water quality, quantity types of issues. And the three were, of course, Dylan Roberts, Carrie Donovan, and Julie McCuskey. And that was very, very, it was a good meeting. It was a good forum, and I really think, I'm very appreciative that they came and shared their time on a Saturday morning. Of import, they did suggest that there were going to be changes forthcoming to Tabor and Gallagher, but they didn't elaborate. So maybe you all know more, but it'll be interesting to see if there is some, whatever, amendment of those, either of those two or both of those laws. That's it.
Great. Anyone else? Ryan?
Sure, just a couple of updates for you on a couple of the more weighty topics we've been dealing with at the staff level. First is the grant for flood mitigation. So that, we are intending to bring back in front of this council on the 12th of March, so that we can have you take a look at both an IGA, an intergovernmental agreement between the town and Eagle County that sets out expectations and roles and things like that, as well as signing ultimately the grant paperwork to accept the money from the federal government. And so I've got to give a lot of credit to Christie for, excuse me, working really hard to get all of that stuff in order, as well as Jeff, who's helped us greatly with the IGA. There's a lot of moving parts to any federal grant, and this is no exception, so I'll come back before you. Then just wanted to mention briefly, as it related to the Tabor issue, it's our intent to be able to get some new information, more information, and seeking feedback from the community on that issue. And we'll be looking to do that in the next week or so. So just trying to keep that communication up. But if there's been any perception of silence, it's just because here at Town Hall, we've been working hard to try to get those, get the research finished, so we can get something out to the community. So that'll be forthcoming. That's, I'll leave it at that for tonight.
Okay. So, next up is a public hearing on the Basalt River Park application on behalf of the Roaring Fork Community Development Corporation. A Colorado nonprofit corporation made an application to develop 28 residential units, three commercial buildings, which are proposed to include two nonprofit facilities, a food and beverage operation and associated improvements of the property, and on-town-owned property adjacent to or near property commonly known as the Roaring Fork Community Development Corporation, the CDC. And so property development actions include rezoning community-serving commercial, community-serving sketch plan review, amendments to the community-serving zone districts, sketch plan subdivision, ESA, and ESA reach and flood blame review. And tonight is an update by...
And what we're going to do is we're just going to pause, Gary, because we're going to put Bruce Kimmel on the phone, and so we want to kind of set up everything before. So he's on the line, so give me a second.
Welcome to the Audio Conferencing Center. Please enter a conference ID, followed by pound. If you are the leader, please press star now.
Hey, Bruce, are you there?
You are now joining the meeting.
Bruce, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, we're just gonna do a sound volume check, 'cause everybody hear Bruce? Okay, so, I think we're ready to start, James.
Okay, thank you. As Gary indicated, this is a continued public hearing on the River Park application submitted by Basalt River Park LLC and the Roaring Fork Community Development Corporation. Just as some background and a brief recap of the application process thus far, the applicant submitted an application to rezone the property to the commercial... community-serving commercial zone district, as well as a sketch plan review for twenty-eight residential units and provide areas for an expanded art base, a visitor's center, and a small food and beverage facility. The council reviewed the application and program and had some concerns. The applicant then held several work sessions to refine the program to include twenty-three residential units, as well as a maker space and office area, and then land for the art base, as well as community building, based on the site plan that you saw in December. And at that December meeting, the council directed the staff to go into a financial review on the project and the concept. So, that's where we are at this point. We have begun the financial review, and as we indicated, we have Bruce Kimmel on the phone this evening to give us a brief update on where we're at with that. Bruce, I'm gonna go ahead and queue up your slideshow.
Okay. Bruce, thanks, James. I can't, can everyone hear me?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, it's a little loud.
It might be a little loud. And Bruce, you get the rent-a-mayor tonight, so that's why you don't hear Jackie's voice.
Well, thanks, everyone, for having me. It's been a little while since I've last spoken with you, and I'm also looking forward to coming out and talking with you face-to-face and in more depth in a couple of weeks, hopefully. But what we want to do tonight is just give you more of an introduction to the analysis that we're doing. We're calling this the Phase One Development Analysis. Give you a preview of Phase Two as well, and some of the, I think, key issues and elements that will require both more discussion and refinement, as well as council direction. Should we make progress and keep going towards a development agreement with Basalt River Park? But what I first wanted to do, if you could go to the second slide, James, is give you just a really fast introduction to Allards, since it has been a couple of years since I've been there. As most of you know, we're independent municipal finance advisors. We only work for public and nonprofit entities. So, even though we work on bond issues with underwriting firms, and we work on development projects, working with commercial and housing developers and so on, our fiduciary duty is always to the public entities that we serve. We have offices in Denver, the Twin Cities, and Milwaukee, based in the Twin Cities, although I'm in Colorado fairly often. And our historical line of work is more mostly... or we're best known for our work in debt planning, issuance, and management on behalf of communities. But increasingly, we're working in non-bond spaces, including financial management, financial plans, utility rate studies, and things of that sort, and real estate development consulting, both as it relates to affordable housing or senior housing projects, as well as all sorts of commercial development. And I've been fortunate to work with the town of Basalt over the last five years or so on a variety of development projects. Moving on to the Phase One analysis, I don't know how many of you have seen the two or three-page scope of work that I pulled together, but I tried to summarize that really briefly here on the next few slides. So, you know, what we're doing here with Phase One is really trying to assess the project as it's currently proposed, look to see if it's substantially complete in its assumptions, as to the budget, all the different components that are being proposed by Basalt River Park, and really drill down into the assumptions as well, in terms of development costs, sales... future sales of the various components, the financing assumptions for construction, and all the things that drive the developers' estimates of the return on investment that they would get from this project. What's also somewhat unique here is the level of, I guess, integration with a number of things that pertain to the town. One is the purchase of a portion of the RF CDC parcel, and you're well aware of that dynamic. But also, improvements to Two Rivers Road, of course, improvements that you'd be making to the eastern portion of the CDC parcel for open space purposes. And then, finally, also, the community building, if and when, and how that should come about. And there's others as well, but those are probably the biggest ones. So, you know, we're looking at Basalt River Park's private development assumptions, but we're also wanting to make sure we're keeping track of all of the other elements that could come before the town's investment decisions, and/or other forms of engagement in the project. And by project, I'm... You know, the words are kind of imperfect in this case, because projects, of course, refer specifically to the River Park development, the residential and commercial uses that are being proposed, but also the inner mingling and intertwining with those public spaces as well, both the road, as well as the open space, and so on. So, I won't read through all these bullet points here, but please stop me if you have any questions about any of them. And I guess, you know, one way to think about potential town investment would be direct investment, such as purchasing a portion of the land, making some of those Two Rivers Road improvements, or indirect investment, such as, again, investing in the open space and/or community building on the eastern portion of the parcel. Moving on to the second scope slide, what we're doing at this point is talking with both the developer and the town about some of these various cost categories that aren't, you know, part of the specific development project, and testing which costs we want to put into the developer's performa to test what that does to the return on investment, in addition to perhaps tweaking or testing some of the developer's own assumptions on other fronts. And all of this is to the point of saying, okay, given our analysis and the key variables and how we think they stack up, you know, is it reasonable to say there is a gap that would prevent the developer from doing all of the essential investments, both onsite and offsite, themselves? And so, that's sort of the endpoint of Phase One, if you will, saying, is there a reasonable threshold for town engagement? What are the towns' options for doing that? And depending on what the Town Council wants to do, you know, do we think that the project would then be complete and economically viable and ready to go? Because the last thing we want to do is suggest options for the town's participation or investment, and then, you still have the project not ready to go due to some other financial element. So, it's really important that whatever we suggest for the Town Council's consideration is something that, you know, we're confident will work for the town and help get to an overall solution for the project to move forward. Then, just really quickly at the bottom of this slide, Phase Two then. Should we get the green light to keep moving forward in discussions as to how to make this all come together? We really want to dig into more of the town's cost-benefit analysis at that point. We know that you have other... many other potential ways to invest your financial capacity, whether that's on the eastern part of the CDC parcel, whether that's investing in childcare, or affordable housing, or what have you. And so, it's really important for us to try to gauge, you know, with the different options available to the town, what would be the near-term cost potentially, what would be the longer-term benefit, and try to get a sense of, you know, how this participation or investment or engagement would affect the town's ability to pursue some of its other priorities as well. We'll look at options again for how best to structure the town's engagement, ideally at the lowest practical cost to the town and with risk mitigation. And then, finally, as you see fit, we would be available to help the town negotiate that development agreement with BRP. But that's, you know, quite a bit way down the road, but this would be after much dialogue and analysis to get to that point. So, then going on, and please stop me again if you have questions, but I wanted to just give you a quick tour here of our analysis. There's quite a few pieces of material that we're looking at, both that have been provided by the developer that are in play with the town as well, and then from other sources. But we are... so, starting our analysis with the developers' budgets... Give me one second. The developers' budgets, the construction funding plans, you know, what are the debt and equity assumptions? What are the assumptions regarding future sales of the different project components? And what are the developers' assumed town investment elements? From there, we're also talking directly with town staff about other possible investments, such as the cost to rebuild Two Rivers Road to fully activate the entire parcel. We're looking at property and sales tax data to try to get a handle, you know, looking ahead to that cost-benefit analysis and what development on this site could mean in terms of future town tax revenues, as well as other tax and fee revenues that could be generated from development. So, we know that, you know, the developer is wanting the town to make some investments around the area. We also have to just get a good, reasonable handle on what kind of upside gain the town might have from developing... seeing the area developed. And then, we're also finally looking at a number of independent sources on development costs, benchmark rates of return, and other key variables. We do a lot of this kind of work, not only in Colorado, but in other parts of the country. And so, myself and some of my colleagues are applying, you know, both written metrics and resources of our own experience to look at, you know, the assumptions that are put forth and what could maybe bear changing or tweaking, and what seems reasonable, and, you know, where do we go with that? So then, in terms of the status and next steps on the next slide, so, BRP has provided a pretty complete set of development budgets, their construction funding plans in terms of debt and equity, and then also assumptions regarding the sale of future components. One thing to note is that, sort of to get to an apples-to-apples comparison, the developer has assumed that they would be selling the various components, whether it be the Maker Space Building, or multifamily, or the proposed River Cabins. But that's not necessarily what they in fact intend to do. So, one of the things we're doing is looking at the numbers as they might play out if the developer or affiliated party, you know, held on to those entities, whether it be the multifamily, or the Maker Space Building, or both, and just seeing if those make a material change to the viability or estimated viability of the project. So, we can talk more about that in detail on the 12th, hopefully. But I just wanted to note that we're testing some alternative scenarios there. We've also had a pretty... actually, two really in-depth conversations with Tim Bolinsky about his numbers, and he made some changes after the first discussion. We've now touched base again, and we'll be doing more discussions and poking and prodding at some of the assumptions. And also, we're having a less detailed, more high-level discussion with town staff. We've had a number of discussions with Ryan, and Susan, and James about the project, where I'm sharing the specific project information, the financials, with town staff, but still sounding out some of the big assumptions and drivers of the performa to just make sure that I'm having that dialogue, both at the developer level and the town staff level. So, really then, where we're at now is to have that next level of detail of analysis. We're doing... we're driving towards the outcomes that I mentioned before, that we're hoping to present to you on March 12th. We're striving for that date. And, you know, the town staff is also doing some of their own ongoing background research as it relates to Two Rivers Road, open space, and things that are probably gonna be more in the town's wheelhouse. So, that will continue to be a parallel track, and we'll look to marry up the different avenues, if you will, as we get further along. So then, finally, issues for further discussion or refinement. Try to just sort of foreshadow or highlight, I think, what some of the big factors will be that we'll need to get our arms around and see how the... if we can get to agreement between the developer and the town. The first would be, what is the overall cost of acquiring the CDC parcel? And what would be the proportionate shares borne by the private development versus the town, based on square footage and perhaps other metrics? So, you know, all of these are subject to further discussion and negotiation. That's a big part of the reason why we're doing this gap analysis, this Phase One analysis, is to sort of gauge sort of a baseline need for town engagement or investment. And then, you know, where we go with these specific possibilities is really subject to discussion and negotiation. But so, parcel acquisition will be a big one, as will the allocation of costs for the Two Rivers Road improvements, whatever that scope ends up being. If it's a mill in an overlay versus a full reconstruction, and with sidewalks and crossings and landscaping, you can see how the scope of that work could be pretty significant. Excuse me. The cost for open space and community building, we expect that the town will bear most, if not all, of the costs for improving its eastern portion of the open space, as I'm calling it. But the community building is an open question at this point, and it's really not something that we're actively considering as part of this Phase One analysis. But I know that it will need to be part of the big-picture cost benefit for the town, assuming we go forward to Phase Two. Then, a big one that I know has come up for discussion is when and how the town can expect to recoup some, or hopefully more, of this investment previously in infrastructure on the CDC parcel, primarily the infrastructure improvements that were funded with the town's 2014 bond issue. Another large one will be exactly how and when these other stakeholders are involved, whether it's the RF CDC as the current landowner, the art base, the Chamber of Commerce, and potentially other community organizations. Right now, this dynamic is sort of seen as one... the developer has presented his numbers with the assumption of this being, you know, Basalt River Park slash town discussion. And to get to a mutually acceptable solution, we may need to get creative in bringing some of these other stakeholders to the table, too. And I don't have specific examples to share with you, but I just wanted to flag that as an avenue for discussion. Another thing that I know that we'll need to raise for you and to illustrate would be the funding mechanisms that would be available to the town for your potential investments. We're not making any assumptions at this point as to whether and how the town will be involved. We have more work to do. But it'll be critical for you to know, you know, what are the routes that you could go down in terms of funding, whether that's cash from different town reserves, or different forms of debt financing, or others. So, more to come on that. And then, finally, I know that there are other town policy issues around here that are, you know, could be interrelated, whether that's affordable housing, attainable housing, whether that's childcare, whether that's office space for nonprofit entities. Clearly, open space is a huge priority for the town and its residents. Clearly, open space is a huge priority for the town and its residents. So, and I know you've had many discussions over the years about the appropriate level of density and footprint here too. And I think it's important to note that, you know, that's not necessarily 100% settled at this point either. So I, you know, my emphasis here is really on the financial elements, but part of getting to a good solution might also be bringing in some of these policy-related objectives that the town has. So why don't I stop there? I welcome any questions or comments, and any initial feedback or direction that you might have.
Okay. Thank you, Bruce. Did the staff want to add anything to that?
Do you want to add anything?
No, I think it'd be appropriate time to entertain the comments of Bruce, and then have applicant comments if you've got at this point.
Okay.
Well, Bruce, thanks for your time and intel on that. As it relates to working on this, I think it's just important that the town, and I've served on boards and various business profession positions, and, you know, when you've got an auditor, or a banker, or an outsider that comes in, and as Bruce said, he's poking and prodding, so that's good. And he is bringing that level of expertise to this discussion that I think is important for you all and for the community to have as an outside set of eyes and expertise that he sees with other municipalities to work our way through the financial side of this. There's going to be some creative solutions that are going to probably come out of it. What we've been working on collectively for the last handful of months is to arrive at a density and a height and a scale and set of uses that we felt were good and worth pursuing now to balance in the financial side of the house, which is relevant. Otherwise, we simply can't pull it off. You know, I think Bruce did a nice job of also framing that it's of high risk to the community if the project that we invest in physically and has the right outcomes doesn't get built, because we're going to have a lot of things relying on that. We've talked about Art Base's position here, community building, and then these other more privately controlled components to the construction plan, but we just need to be able to pull it off. And this is that balancing effect now. And this is very common in the development arena. You have to go back and forth between the size, scale, and the uses and the values to those, and reconcile that to what will work on paper, on a spreadsheet, and on the ledger that the bankers are going to be looking at. We do have levers to use here. We've got variables to work with, and that's really where Bruce brings in a lot of expertise. I really look forward to hearing his thoughts as we get deeper into this. It's also highlighted, I think, as we've gotten any of these discussions, of just the historical backdrop to this that is weighty. And there's a huge amount of expectation and expectation about what this project can bear, or what this project can deliver and bring to the community that I think we all need to be guarded about and careful about. We have, through the last set of meetings together, we've gotten this tighter, smaller, tighter, smaller. Well, those expectations that were in place that go back well before my time, I think we need to be careful about, and still anticipating that some of those conditions can still come out of what is now less of a project. But we agreed that that was, less of a project was good. Now we have to also balance that with what the project can bear financially in the way of public amenities and public outcomes. I think those are my comments.
Okay.
Anything?
Nothing. Just going. Yeah. So staff would suggest asking any questions that you have of Bruce while we have him on the phone, and then taking public comments with the eye to be continuing the public hearing to March 12th for further conversation on the analysis that Bruce is doing.
Okay. So, I look at council. Any questions of Bruce right now? Anyone? No?
Hi, Bruce. This is Bill Infante, newly elected council member, or one of two newly elected council members. I'm kind of interested in the assumptions that you're looking at, and we've discussed these before. And I guess, from my perspective, sitting as we are on a quasi-judicial panel, it appears to me that the development that's currently proposed serves the interests and objectives of our town. It satisfies our strategy, the master plan. And so in that capacity, and from the perspective of our mandate and authority, I think they've done a commendable job of delivering a project that will satisfy the town's regulatory and legal structures. And at the same time, I am interested in the assumptions and how you factor these into the model, and the assumptions of either the Art Base's ability to fund its own development. And then the other two big assumptions are assumptions about the town's acquisition of some or all of the residual parcel at the corner of Midland and Two Rivers, and the further assumption regarding building A, because I think I would have to presume that conclusions about one or all of those three issues will affect the financial returns of the project as a whole. And so I'm curious how we are modeling that, and what options we've considered in analyzing the project.
Well, you've packed a lot there. Let me try to break that down a little bit. So this, your question really illustrates the sort of intertwined nature of the private development proposal and the public investment that is likely to be necessary. You know, as it relates to what the town will be investing, you've clearly got access to capital. So if the town, for instance, decided to invest X million dollars in acquiring the eastern portion of that CDC parcel, and making improvements to it to open up the big V and entryway into the rest of the River Park, and also if the town decided after, I'm getting much deliberation and discussion, to build, to actually be the primary developer of a community building, you know, it's clear to me as a bond advisor that you could certainly have a number of routes to do that. Now, the big question, of course, is how do you pay those bonds back? What are those repayment revenues? How does that impact the town's ability to pursue other priorities as well? Similarly, if you were to use cash, whether it's postcash, or cash from your general fund, or other pots of money, you know, certainly you do have some reserves available, but they're not unlimited. It's, of course, a scarce resource with other demands on them as well. And so that's all, those are all elements that while you certainly have the capacity to do any or all of those things, it comes at a price, and you really need to reconcile, you know, your decisions on those investments to the rest of your priority list, to your overall fiscal capacity. And so I would expect to have many, many discussions, if the town wanted me to, with Ryan and with Christie, about how do we reconcile all of this into the bigger picture and make sure that the overall, the town's overall financial viability remains strong and growing, and so on. So that's one part of it. You know, the Art Base is a somewhat gray area. We haven't been asked to really look at the Art Base. Right now, the assumption is that, you know, the Art Base buys their land basically just strictly a prorata per square foot amount, and there's not a whole lot in the developer's proposal about that. But, you know, based, I guess, depending on the council's direction, we certainly could, at an appropriate time, start having more discussions with them and to try to gauge when and how that part of the development would come to fruition. As you might know, we worked with the town and with RMI. We've done some work as well, looking at the Warren Ford Conservancies Project, which I'm looking forward to seeing when I'm out there. I haven't seen that yet. And so we've had a number of, I think, successful engagements working with the town and its nonprofit partners, trying to make sure that the development plans hold water and, you know, are viable. We've also had some discussions in the last three years with the TACAA as well, on behalf of the town. So, you know, I guess that's sort of a to-be-determined area, Bill, but I think you're touching on some good examples of how certainly there's going to be a developer's rate of return that will be impacted by certain elements, but there's also the town's rate of return. And we'll need to do more work in really fleshing out what the town council needs to see and wants to see in that town rate of return analysis.
Any other questions?
I'll follow up later.
So Bruce, that dovetails, this is Jen Riffel, that dovetails fantastically into, the question that I have is, for the Salt River Park not being a nonprofit partner, can you provide us the acceptable range of ROI that you are utilizing?
For a for-profit developer?
Correct.
Is that, yeah. Yes, Jen, we'll be definitely talking about that as it relates to the specific components. We would typically drill down and look at rates of return, not for an entire project like this, but really looking at the for-sale housing, the multifamily housing, both the market rate, as well as the affordable housing, and then for the commercial space. And all of those have prospectively different ranges of rates of return. And, you know, rate of return is not, there's no bright line limit test for this. We've had a number of cases, including in mountain communities, where developers have said, you know, we're wanting to move forward with this project. We see this project as a way of preserving capital, and actually, the straight-up cash-on-cash return, or internal rate of return, isn't our primary objective. It's more, you know, doing something productive with our capital resources. And of course, they want to make money, but they've been willing to do projects at what might be considered below market rates of return. That's not very common, but that does happen. And, you know, at the same time, there's certainly many, many instances of where the developers are saying, no, we absolutely need to have, you know, more middle to a higher range rate of return because of perhaps the untested nature of the development, perhaps, you know, other risks that the developer perceives they're taking in construction or in selling the project, or operating the project, as the case might be. And so you really see a wide range of development return objectives. I think what we'll be drilling down, just to summarize, what we'll be drilling down on is, it's all about the prospective risk and return, both for the developer and for the town. And we'll try to illustrate our interpretation of that risk and return, Jen, so that you can gauge why we think, if we think, for instance, the developer, in this case, might not be bearing a ton of risk, and I'm not saying that is the case, but if we say, you know, on a range, there's less risk here for the developer, then maybe it's appropriate to look at solutions that have, you know, still a strong rate of return, but on the median to lower end of that range, versus if we think, gee, the developer really is taking substantial risk in a number of areas, and let's try to get our arms around those, then maybe giving them the capacity, the running room, the opportunity to have a higher rate of return would be appropriate. So we have to gauge that as well. And so there's really no sort of one limit test of, you know, 12% or 10% or 8% that we can say is make or break. We'll have to drill down and get a little more granular, but we'll look forward to having that conversation.
Anyone? Did you want to follow up?
I guess, yeah. Bruce, just to circle back around, I guess, you know, you've hit a little bit of the nail on the head for me, in the sense of questioning the optimal use of public funds, and whether the public resource should be invested to build, own, and operate what could otherwise be a commercial building, built, owned, and operated by the private sector. It seems to me that the private sector is far better equipped to own and operate real estate that is sublet to restaurants than the public sector is. And if that building A is a critical part of the plan, same with the Art Base, I mean, the development loses an awful lot if we don't have the Art Base or the commercial building. But I would only argue that I think it is much more the scope and purview of the private sector to build, own, operate private functions, commercial operations, than it is for the public sector. So if we're assuming that the town is going to fund that construction through whatever source, that assumption might be founded on some pretty weak foundations.
Yeah, that's a valid point, and we haven't made any assumptions, one way or the other. I do work on many, many examples of public-private partnerships where, you know, you can see such a wide range of creative solutions. And I guess I wouldn't see it as either or. There could be an instance where if this rises to the level of importance for the town, and if there does seem to be a lack of private entities that are stepping forward to do this, you could, in theory, and I'm not advocating for this, but you could in theory see a solution where the town issues COPs or certificates of participation to build the facility, but then enters into a very robust lease arrangement with a private entity to actually have the responsibility of operating it, subleasing it to restaurants or whoever, or event facilitators, whatever the case might be, and then making those payments back to the town to make the payments on the debt service. Again, I'm not saying that that is a model the town should be comfortable with. We're far from that. But that is just one example of where you could take people's relative expertise, people's relative access to capital, and try to find a solution that is acceptable to the governing body. Ultimately, it's the council's call, of course, and you have to look at a potential investment in the context of all the other ways that you could leverage your either cash reserves or your borrowing capacity. But I'll look forward to delving into those different options. And the private sector is, you know, coming up with more and more different ways of providing solutions. And so I look forward to seeing if there can be a private sector solution that meets the town's expectations and gets this kind of community building done.
Cool. Yeah. Anything else?
Final, can I, Bruce, can I ask a favor for the March 12th meeting? Can we get your presentation ahead of time so that we can... Can we get your presentation ahead of time so that we can read through it? And we don't need to call you and ask you personal questions, but just so that we can review it ahead of time to have intelligent questions to ask?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Susan, I'll give Susan credit for this, has made it very clear that, you know, when we have a more substantive analysis that's ready to share, hopefully, tonight's discussion was helpful and you can sort of laying the foundation. But once we are ready, hopefully, that will be before March 12th, that we do get that to you the week before. So, that's clearly understood. We're right with you.
Thank you so much. And then as well, I know that there's certain things that the public are going to be very interested in that are the assumptions. And one of those is the amount Ellers is utilizing and the amount for refunding town investment on the land. So, some of those just easy items that are public, if we can have those listed out, that would be so beneficial, too.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Okay. Anything else? Well, thank you, Bruce. I'm going to open the public hearing at 7:10. Anyone from the public? There's really only one public. So Bernie.
Thanks, Gary. Bernie Grauer. There's a lot here that we don't know. And I'm looking forward to learning a lot more about it, particularly what was the actual amount of the town's investment preparing the land that the RF CDC owns for development so that it could be safely developed? Because without the town's investment, the RF CDC and the developer would not be sitting here today. And past councils, I think, have made an ethical commitment that the town would get reimbursed to some extent for that investment. So that, to me, is key, along with, I think, past councils' commitment unequivocally that more land would be purchased for park, approximately one acre at the intersection of Midland and Two Rivers Road. So those are keys. I support this development because I think it brings forth vitality at a reasonable scale of development. And that's very important. I would say that, to me, is number one in the town's goals of moving ahead with its plans for the future, is to have a realistic and appropriate-scaled commercial development on this parcel and provide an additional amount of space for the V. I would say we're facing some real challenges because we found out that we overwithheld about $2.5 million, including penalties of taxes. And we won't know whether we have to refund that or not until November. Well, that would pretty much wipe out our reserves, our cash reserves. So where would we get money to further support this development if it's deemed necessary? Very difficult question to answer. My feeling is we won't have the answer till that November election. I believe this project, with the meeting of affordable housing guidelines being the proper size and scale and interacting a variety of mixed uses, including nonprofit uses and small-scale apartments that millennials could afford, is worthy of some level of town financial support. So I simply encourage you to move ahead as rapidly as possible. And I believe that this project is worthy of the town's financial support.
Thank you, Bernie. Okay. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for further comments or motion to continue.
Mayor, I move the town council to continue the public hearing to March 12th, 2019.
Second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Bruce.
Thanks.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you all very much.
Do you have any agenda minute?
We're thanking you.
We're thanking you. We're praising. There was the proclamation. Putting that together is really brilliant.
Cool. All right. Next up is discussion on the third Roaring Fork Club event. We have Scott Gilbert from Habitat for Humanity. And I'm going to turn it over to Ryan. But I'll just give a preface that I also kind of facilitated this in some way to kind of have a discussion on this. So.
Ryan? Yeah, so I think we've got a just about two-minute video that we'll want to watch. And do we want to do that at the beginning and then we can get into the discussion?
Sure.
It's really cool that the sort of strict contact for the county are coming together to help teachers have this opportunity and keep teachers in the valley with realistic home prices. And that's really cool that they're doing that for us. And it helps that teachers will stay and be able to serve students and schools.
Living in the valley has changed a lot and it's really pushed out a lot of us, middle-income people and middle-income families, and, you know, hardly working free jobs. We would be able to stay in the valley here if we were not given this opportunity.
I'm excited. I have a 13-year-old that I have 50% of the time. And it's teaching her to, you know, be independent. I did it on my own, filling out paperwork, and it's great. I'm excited.
It's just the fact that we get to be a part of a community project and build ourselves a home and help others build a home. Words can't really describe it. It's such a cool opportunity for us.
Everything. In a few words, everything. Yeah.
That didn't make the crowd go. It's cool. Thank you.
So, on that note, Scott and I had a conversation after Gary and I spoke. And Scott had inquired with the town about using one of the events from the Roaring Fork Club's PUD that requires them to offer a portion of the club for three different events that could be held each year. Right now, we have two events. We haven't used the third event. And so, that one is sitting out there. And there's been a few ideas on that over the years, but for this year, it was going to go unused. And one, perhaps, wrinkle in Scott's plan is that part of the PUD language contemplates two of those events using the clubhouse of the Greens and only one golf tournament. The one golf tournament is spoken for for this year. We did just complete a process around the New Year in December, and that has been awarded. And Scott has been in touch with the club, asking them about the possibility of being able to use the golf course for their event. And that will be, you know, something that the club will have to determine if they feel like that is something they can do. But here, this evening, we really wanted to get some direction from council. And the idea is that all of the proceeds from the event would go towards the Basalt Vista project. So there was a reason for showing that. And with that, I think we could get a little input from Scott, perhaps. I know that he's had some more recent conversations with the club, and he can fill us in on sort of what their perspective is. But after that, we'd love to hear from you all and just kind of thoughts on what to do next.
Thanks, Ryan. Good evening. Jen, I brought you a hat. I didn't know you'd be a step ahead of me. I've never seen you nod in a hat. So, good evening. You know, first of all, thanks for all the town's support and partnering on this project. This has been sort of a dream come true, and it's coming true. It's happening fast, but not fast enough. So we greatly appreciate what the town has done. And that's been a relief for some of the fees early on and then some participation in net zero. When we first came in front of you, the idea of net zero was not a concept. Until one of your council members, not here tonight, maybe by design, suggested we not put a gas line in and make it all electric. And I thought he was crazy. But within 45 days, we had support from the county, support from the town, support from Holy Cross, support from CORE. And next thing we know, we've got an all-net-zero community. And it's really funny because it's like a little cherry on top of a really big project. But for some people, that buzz is really important. And Holy Cross sees it as a laboratory. NREL's gotten involved, and we're hoping to find out what's realistic in this day and age for all-electric. We're making great progress on construction. I'll just bring four points. You know, since I've been here, it's been a while. I felt like I was here every week, so I'm sure you're glad that I haven't been recently. All the utilities and roads are in, except for the street lights and a few speed bumps, which is amazing. We kind of got in just before the frost really hit. So now we have $3 million worth of improvements covered by snow, and there's no real sense anything has happened until early December, when we started coming out of the ground. We now have two duplexes fully dried in, fully framed, and in one of them, electric plumbing and the heating and cooling are all in. So it's really happening. And then, you know, anytime you want to go for a tour, come swing a hammer, happy to do that. I called the mayor this morning, and she said, I know, I know, Amy keeps asking me, so I won't make a big move again, but you're welcome. So, the partnership is working, what we found with the original concept and with net zero. People do what they can. I was over here last week with Tori Franks, who's the community development director of Eagle County. And I was walking the Forest Service parcel just up frying pan here that I spent time there with Kathy Click. And Tori and I were chatting, and she said, you know, it's interesting how each project, we work on different people, do different things. And she said Eagle County doesn't have much money, but they have water rights. And then they were able to give me water rights to a project to make it happen, and it didn't cost them any money, and it happened. And tonight, sort of in that theme, I'm trying to ask for your support for this golf tournament because it can mean to Habitat about $75,000 a year, which is ironically the gap per home. We projected about 70, 75. It's running at 85, but whatever, loss per home, which is fine. It's still early, and we'll get more efficient. And so, we're hoping that we can use the golf tournament here in Basalt at the Roaring Fork Club and have it go straight to Basalt Vista. In full disclosure, I know I don't look like I am a member of the Roaring Fork Club. I'm a member for about 17 years. I used to have a real job in Copa America, so I can almost afford it. So I have an ability to talk to Jeff regularly and talk to Greg Bryan, the pro. And we've done our tournament 13 times, twice as the charity classic, and we know how to run a tournament. So you're enabling us to do that as a minimal investment, but a big vote on your part, and we can turn that into real money. When other nonprofits come along and try and do it, it's just not the same ramp up. We've got 9,000 people in our database. We know who the golfers are. We know how to make it happen. So it's something we can confidently say what we will turn into cash. This year is a little complicated. The Roaring Fork Club, sort of always evolving, has decided no more outside events, which means they don't want to have any more weddings that close down the clubhouse and close down the facility, you know, during June, July, and August. But when the powers that be decide no more outside events, they didn't realize that sweep of the rug meant we couldn't do our golf tournament, which is kind of like, it's not really an outside event. It's September 16th. In theory, is the slot we've used. It's the day before their closing member-staff tournament. They're going to be doing irrigation this year. We're likely to get a 15-hole tournament after the members play in the morning, one in the afternoon. It's not ideal. But we've done it twice at Aspen Glen, and there's no comparison. And the fact we're doing this project in Basalt Vista just makes it such a nice hand-in-hand tournament. Do it in Basalt. The benefits go to Basalt. It makes it easier for us to explain it. I think these hats actually came from the golf tournament last September. So, the club's going through some evolution. You know, it's sort of funny, they've asked me, this has sort of come to you. And if the council directs them to do it, they're happy to do it because this third event hasn't been used. I don't know that they'll serve it up for golf for anybody else, quite frankly. You know, because Jeff's letter was pretty clear. So, we're just asking for your support. Happy to answer any questions. You know, I can tell you this, all the money goes right back into Basalt. You get a sense from the families how exciting it is for them. This is, you know, Basalt, helping the Basalt Project happen, something hopefully you all can do without any penalty. And, you know, I'm happy to answer anything I can to make you feel great about it. We're excited where we are, and we're already hunted trying to figure out the next project so we can be ready. And when I come back next time, it won't be in a rush like last time. Thank you.
Counselor, anyone?
Just real quick, we've never used this third.
We offered it to the, well, we offered it to the Roaring Fork Conservancy and the Hope Center. And then they weren't, you know, it was a bad snow year, and they ended up canceling that, and then we scheduling didn't work out. So, we were, eventually, we want to convert it to a community chest, but we're not ready this year because of the amount of legwork it takes to get there. So we haven't allocated the third event.
Anyone else?
Just because this is a one-time ask for the year 2019? Or are you asking for this third event indefinitely?
That wasn't my concept, but I'm open to that, it feels like. Yeah, we're just trying to handle one year at a time, quite frankly.
And so, just to clarify with staff, I know that the... Just to, sorry, it wasn't written down. And I think everyone understands that I'm a visual person, so I'm just trying to... Thanks for bearing with me here. Get the gears going here. That there are three events, only one of which is to be a golf tournament?
That's correct. Of the three events in the PUD, they were required for one of those to be able to use the golf. One of those, that's now taken. But through Scott's discussions with the Roaring Fork Club, they seem amenable to offering that this year as a possibility for a second golf. So it would be our third, see if you can get this one, see if I can get this one. Our third event, but the second that would have golf. Yeah. And that would normally not be permitted, or at least isn't contemplated in their requirements, their development requirements. So, looks like there's an add-on.
Okay. And then, and then just to clarify the mechanism for the other two events, those rotate yearly with who the recipient is? Or is the Roaring Fork Conservancy always one of the recipients? And then the golf tournament gets what?
The, so the Basalt Education Foundation, they've had their annual event there for a number of years. So they're, they've been, you know, sort of a static recipient of that. One event, that's not golf, that's just indoors in the clubhouse. The second one has rotated. That's the golf tournament. And then this third one, I guess, really unused.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying.
Sure.
Well, no, I don't have anything clarifying. I just look at this as a way... I was kind of surprised when I found out we had three events and we weren't using the third event. And when Scott, you know, came to me and was like, could we potentially use it? You know, and I talked to Ryan, and we're not using it for this year. You know, to me, I was like, and the fact that the Roaring Fork Club might give another golf tournament? Because I feel that's a great way to raise pretty significant amounts of money. So I was definitely in favor of going forward and letting them have the third event for 2019. And then kind of looking at what 2020 is and 2021 and see really where we're at with it. Because in the end, we knew... Because in the end, we knew there was going to be a gap in funding and Scott did promise that he was going to raise it all. So this is one of the ways that they could raise that money. So I'm supportive.
Yeah. I would only say we think very, very highly of Habitat's project and, and since we already have an investment, anything we can do to further enhance the viability and the affordability of the project, I think we want to support.
Katie?
So our normal procedure is to have a public process in which people apply for the one golf tournament. And this would be an exception in which it's not a public process. It's coming to Basalt Council and asking us to advocate for Habitat for Humanity to do a different type of non-public event, non-public process. I get all of that. And I have expressed in the past that I don't like these one-offs because I think it needs to be fair and open to the public. But I know that we're kind of, this is an exception and I'm willing to move forward with that, but like you were describing from moving forward now that we know we have three events, that we make this accessible to all.
So what's the actual direction we need to do?
That's it. I mean, really, truly, yeah.
It wouldn't be bad to have a motion.
Yes. I was gonna say, it's my understanding the staff is looking for direction on whether it's okay to allocate this third event to the Habitat for Humanity. So you guys have all kind of provided that direction, but memorialize it, a motion would be fine.
Mayor, I move that the town council award the third available event to Habitat for Humanity for 2019.
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. You don't get, you got it. What are you?
I want to say, first of all, two things. One, I would say thank you, appreciate it. You know, it's ironic, and I wish this one were on camera because I don't want this to sound insincere. You know, we've seen this project as four key partners, school district, Pittsburgh County, Town of Basalt, and Habitat. And everything we do, we try and include you. If you look at on the video, we've seen as one of the four partners. And it's really nice that we could figure out an idea that wasn't planned that can enable the town to be able to do more, to be part of this experience. Because I think, I know, we're getting incredible attention on the western slope of Colorado, in the state of Colorado and nationally. I get calls at least once a month from somebody that Carrie Mortgage has spoken to and said, "You gotta call Scott Gilbert, what's going on in Basalt? It's fantastic." So we may not realize it's being seen, it's pretty cool. But since I'm here and I have a chance to say thank you, we'll walk around and give you each a solar phone charger, okay? And I have instructions in the bag because the original instructions from China said, "Don't put it in the sun," so I want to not have you get distracted by that. It's okay if it goes in the sun. And this is really emblematic of the partners on our project and the fact that it's a solar project. So I have them in the bag, I'll walk around. I just want to say thank you to everybody for your support, appreciate it.
Thank you, Scott. Okay.
Jen, do you need a backup pad or you're good?
I'm great and I think that this is on the umbrella of what we can accept.
I was gonna say, what is our gifts policy?
If you'd like to leave those with Pam, we'll, and we can talk about that.
Yeah.
If you'd like to leave those with Pam, we can talk about that.
Well, I'll let you guys deal with that piece of it.
Yeah, we'll follow up with Scott.
All right. Next up is the update and discussion on the Tree Farm application. I see James coming to the table. Okay, James?
Okay. Uh, thank you. This is an Eagle County referral item on the Tree Farm final plat application for phase one of the Tree Farm development, as well as the Tree Farm applicant's request to phase the repayment of their reimbursement requirement for their share of the Willets underpass costs. As background, Eagle County approved the Tree Farm development preliminary plan in September of 2017 and it included approximately 500,000 square foot of development, including up to 340 dwelling units. The applicants have submitted their final plan plat application for phase one of the development in Eagle County. This is the proposed phase one portion. We've got Willets Town Center over here, this is Highway 82, and then this was the overall Tree Farm development. They are proposing a two-week referral period to the town, which is what their Eagle County code mandates. The final plating process in Eagle County is more of an administrative type of process that reviews the plat at final for consistency with their preliminary plan reso conditions. Staff has provided a draft referral letter that you have in your packet for the council's consideration. It points out that the town had many kind of unresolved concerns at the preliminary plan stage with the items that were itemized in the December 16th, I'm sorry, December 2016 letter that was included in your packet and was also emailed out to you individually. It requests that the county make sure that all necessary CDOT permits are obtained and that it also requires that they do the fiber optic installation to coordinate the street lights, traffic lights, that was also required of the Willets Town Center development by CDOT. And then regarding the phasing of the payment of the reimbursement that is being requested for the Willets underpass funding, the applicants are requesting to phase it such that they would pay first half of the almost $860,000 with their final plat application. And then they're requesting that they be able to pay the quarter of that $860,000 when they get to CO on 200,000 square feet of development in the project and then the final quarter of that $860,000 when they get to 400,000 square feet of development. The county's preliminary plan reso that they approved actually required that they pay almost basically all of the $860,000 at the time they file their, their final plat. So they're requesting some relief in phasing on that. Staff has come up with four options and let me scroll down. Uh, for the council to consider, these are on the second page of your memo in the packet. One would be to provide comments supporting the Tree Farms reimbursement proposal for phasing. A second option would be to provide comments indicating that the town is not supportive or accepting of the phasing of the reimbursement. That's in your draft letter that you have in the packet. Third option would be to provide comments supporting phasing of the reimbursement by proposing an alternative phasing scenario that would not quite be as flexible as the applicant's proposal, such as potentially requiring the first half of the funds at the final plat and the second half of the reimbursement prior to see the issuance of the first CO, so that it would come in pretty quick timing. Or four, you know, you could negotiate with the developer for potential land use concessions that would alleviate concerns that the town had about competition with the town's commercial businesses. You know, staff was maybe potentially thinking about, talking about if we provided support for the, the phasing of the reimbursement, that maybe they could provide a concession that they wouldn't have a grocery store allowance over there or, or other types of commercial businesses. So staff wanted to check in with council and, and see what kind of comments you may have on their reimbursement proposal, as well as the letter that staff has drafted.
Okay. Thanks, James. So we all read it. What do, what do, what do you think?
James, real quick, every time you're saying final plat throughout this, this is just the phase one final plat, correct?
It is the phase one final plat. They would have to come back for a second phase final plat, but as I indicated, you know, it's kind of more of an administrative process. It's not like the town's final plat where, you know, you kind of revisit the project for a third time. It's kind of just to see if they comply with the preliminary plan conditions, basically, and filing a plat.
Okay. Anyone?
I have a question of clarification. What kind of money is it when the money comes back? Is it general funds or is it restricted in any way?
It goes back to, I think it would go back to the, I don't know if James knows.
I don't know that I have a clear answer on that either. We'd have to probably work, work through that. You know, I think it, the original funds were probably out of.
From the Willets Rita. So we took some for the town's, coming back to Willets Rita.
So that could potentially mean that it would go back into the Willets Rita for the purposes?
Yeah, I think we, I think it needs some more discussion about it. Because, because the money also gets allocated. Do you want to talk about that at all? Doesn't all come to the Town of Basalt?
Yeah. RFTA paid into it and also provided a loan to the town originally, so a portion of that would get reimbursed back to RFTA as well.
So does RFTA have to sign off on this too?
Well, we would consult with RFTA, but we wanted to kind of get council's take on the repayment reimbursement plan that they're proposing first.
So in the plausible scenario that it does come back into the Willets Rita, remind me, what does the Willets Rita have to be used for? Is that TACAL?
Well, TACAL gets separated out. So that, that money just gets separated out. The town share, you know, basically it's for capital improvements that benefit the Willets in Basalt area. It's been used in the past for the underpass, for the roundabout, for the East Valley Road traffic calming. Those are the, and the park benches, but those are the main capital improvements that we look for. So it doesn't necessarily have to be used just in Basalt, but we felt those improvements were really needed in Willets Town Center.
Anyone else? Jen?
I take a two or a four with a side of annexation into town. Just trying to make a little giggle there.
Made Pam giggle.
Yeah.
So.
And we encouraged the applicants, but it doesn't.
I don't see they showed up. I mean, my, my, my comment was if, I was only thinking, the only way I'd want to do it is if we negotiated with the developer for a land use concession. I was thinking of saying no commercial until the full amount was repaid. And, you know, I was just thinking of, that was one of our main concerns in the original application was the competition with Town of Basalt things, considering this wasn't going to be annexed. And to me, I look at it going, it was approved, it wasn't approved with most of our conditions, so they should just pay it back or come and negotiate. And the land use concession I would like to see is a, you know, a restriction on all commercial until it's paid back. And if it's, if they have, you know, by the time they get to the last piece, you know, the last 200 square, 200,000 square feet, you know, they, that's going to be a long time from now, potentially. And, and they, in their emails, said they need to make the math work. And the way the math works is that we make concessions and to me, time is money because we've, we've basically put the money in years ago to get the underpass. So that time, money is past and so it's not going to be as worth, as much today as it was worth back then and it's definitely not going to be as worth as much 20 years from now or 10 years from now as then. And so I think, you know, we should get some concession for it. So that's what I've been thinking. I originally saw staff's recommendation about just food establishments, but I was like, "All commercial, go with that." So that, that's kind of where I'm at. Or I'm at just saying, pay it. Now.
Well, Seth, Gary?
So anyone?
I guess my, the question that I was asking when you had stepped out was what, what color money is it? What does the money come back into? And Susan explained that it comes back into the Willets Rita.
Well, we, we probably need to do.
We have to look at that. So, I mean, frankly, if we have any discretion over how the Willets Rita money might be used and if it could ever be dedicated to TACAL, which is encountering some new challenges, that would actually be an interesting option for us to explore. But having said that, do we know what they're proposing for the Tree Farm? Because my understanding was that it was all residential and a hotel. Are they talking about commercial now or?
Well, I think they have flexibility with the commercial acreage that they do have. So a hotel, I've heard that as well, but I think they're, they're fairly broad strokes as far as allowed uses in there.
Because this is precisely the point that we have actually discussed in the finance committee, the notion of the risk of our revenue streams in the event that there are threats derived from one or another source, like City Market down in Carbondale or Trader Joe's, if ever that were to be the case, at the Tree Farm. And so I would suggest we probably do want to have a chat to secure that interest, to ensure that we are not at risk of losing the most significant stream of our revenues that we depend upon.
I like number four with the, leaving the commercial. I don't know if we can stop all their commercial, but also what about some stricter deed restricting on some of their buildings to help tackle our affordable housing issues? Because I know their, their words they're using are obtainable, affordable, and they're having the one-month purchase period. Is there anything we can leverage on that for more permanent, locals only or, I don't know?
Or deed restriction?
Yeah, yeah, like hard deed restrictions on a certain amount.
Yep.
Katie?
Um, exactly what you said. I mean, if we had to make, if I had to make a decision tonight and the developer had no interest in negotiating significantly and seriously with us, for me, it's number two 100%. But if they want to come in and have a serious conversation, I'm willing to have that conversation.
Well, that's what we can put back at them.
Yep.
I'm okay with that. I mean, that's, it's kind of saying number four or number two. It's number four, negotiate for land use concessions. I think you heard, you know, between limiting the commercial or eliminating commercial until it's paid back or, or some deed restriction on housings. So let's see. I would say put that out there. You guys okay with that?
And/or both.
Yeah, and/or both. Well, they would negotiate with us.
Yep.
So, okay. You got direction?
I think so. I think that's good.
We have direction on that piece. The rest of the letter, is the council accepting or have adjustments to the rest of the framework there?
The letter as drafted, which suggests payment upfront 100% is overcome by Gary's suggestion that we engage them in some type of discussion and subject to the outcome of that discussion, we would then be in a position to determine whether some phasing might be contemplated or not.
You okay with that? Because the rest of the letter was.
I am, yeah.
I'm good with the CDOT access permits and stuff like that. Is everyone, yeah, I think that's.
And the only reason I'm asking is we've got kind of a short timeframe to get comments back. We'll certainly get back to them, but we may not be able to bring the discussion back to council before their comment deadline is up, so.
You want a motion, James?
That'd be helpful, I think, if we could.
So do you want a motion to approve the letter that's as amended?
As amended.
I have a motion that.
Second?
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Side conversation, yes.
You had a conversation?
No.
She was distracting me.
Yes.
Don't distract Ryan. Come on.
It was not supposed to be the other way around.
So Susan, you're up for the board and committee appointments?
Oh, yeah, we're gonna do that first and actually.
It's gonna be easy, so.
Yeah, I think that you could have a motion. The candidates were Abby Gurkey to the Basalt Public Arts Commission, Katie Erickson to the Basalt Affordable Housing Commission, and Ann Baker also to the Basalt Affordable Housing Commission, and they would all be for three-year terms.
And we did have, just for, just for clarity, the other two.
We'd bring back.
Still show, okay.
Yeah.
They showed interest or you could.
Mayor, I move that all the applicants that applied for the two. Mayor, I move that all the applicants that applied for the two or the open seats be granted their three-year terms for BPEC and.
Clarification, did you mean the people that were?
Everyone.
That, including Rick Stevens and and.
People that weren't here and people that weren't here.
Just wanted to be clear on the motions.
Every, Mayor, I move that everyone that applied for the open positions on both BPEC and BAC be appointed.
Second.
Any discussion?
I would, so it's an interesting evolution of how we're going with the committees, and it is this moving target. And one thing that we did in the past that was very effective, that staff did take the time to write up our questions for applicants and having in-person interviews. In the case, we're not doing that here.
We did with some of them earlier.
Oh, during the work session?
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
We had of the five.
Oh, okay.
Two weren't present.
Okay.
So Ryan's motioning to approve all of them regardless of whether they showed up and were interviewed earlier tonight.
Got it. Okay. Sorry I missed that. Then, so nonetheless, what what seemed to work great in the past was having a committee of counselors who took care of the interview process so that it wasn't during a work session or there was actual time to sit down and talk and then discuss, look at the strategic plan, where we're going, what background and knowledge, and then turn that back around to the applicants. And I felt that that was very effective. Here's an example of how I was out of the loop, but nonetheless, thank you other counselors for being here and taking care of that. So I would be game for in the future, starting up the the small committee and not doing it during council meetings or work sessions, et cetera.
But I think that's how it went.
No, no.
Didn't all these candidates already interview with BAC and BPEC?
Bill, it used to be kind of like what we did for the golf tournament, where we had like a subcommittee of three council members that would go and chat with them and interview them and.
And then bring a recommendation.
And then make the recommendation, yeah.
I think we should move, I like that for the future, but I'm, I mean, basically have a motion in a second on it.
I'll just make one comment that, I mean, I understand that some people couldn't attend tonight, but I think it's nice that we expect people to show up and talk with us and not have this become a new precedent that you just send a letter and you don't ever have to show up and you don't have to talk to us. And I know that we're creating the subcommittee so that we can be more accommodating to schedules, but I mean, I think that having a physical presence and putting that effort and then coming to talk to us is a critical component of this process.
Is it okay if I just add one thing? I I agree. One clarification, I did have a conversation with Rick Stevens today, and he was not able to come because of a medical issue that he had in his family, so he he did call and let us know and then talk to me about it and said that there was still bad interest, so.
Humberto said it was work.
Yep.
So.
All right, so it sounds like we have a an option to be more accommodating to schedules with these subcommittees.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Against? So next is the selection of the Basalt Master Plan Consultant, and there's one random guy in the back.
Pick me up off the street, that's right. Thanks for bringing the Habitat Golf Tournament, by the way, that's the most fun I have all year. But no, it's never done.
Okay, Susan.
Okay, so what we have in front of us today is we're looking for the council to recommend selecting CTA as the master plan consultant to prepare the master plan. What we would do after this is we would bring back on the consent agenda at the next meeting the resolution and the actual contract itself. I think the council's aware that kind of the impetus to do a new updated master plan came out of the P and Z, and the P and Z had a couple of work sessions with the town council. Town council saw the RFP, sent out the RFP in early December. We did our normal advertising, but we also reached out to a number of national organizations because the idea was to welcome invitation with local and kind of national firms. We had a pre-proposal meeting that was non-mandatory, but we actually filmed it and put it on grassroots, so if you were a firm that wasn't local, that you could watch the pre-proposal meeting. The proposals were due at the end of January, and we received ten proposals. One of those missed the deadline, and another one wasn't incomplete, so we kind of had a staff group plus the chair of the P and Z, shortlist those. And then on February eleventh, we interviewed five of those firms, and we, under the procurement code, the town manager's actually in charge of selecting the selection committee, and it was made up of two representatives of the P and Z, Bill Marin and Bernie Grauer, one representative of Post, which was Cindy Bruce, and then three staff members, which were Ryan, James, and me. And so it was a big day. We interviewed all five firms, and in the end, based on the comments of all the committee members, we recommended that CTA be the firm that was selected there, collaborating with Connect One. Everybody, I think, knows Giles knows projects that Connect One's done for the town, like the Midland Park, and obviously they're working with Habitat Humanity on the project there and worked a lot with us on the River Master Plan. So we thought CTA kind of had the national presence, a mountain, a mountain planning firm with a lot of master planning experience, but they combining that with a local firm that we thought could, you know, make sure that we kind of get what we expected and kind of a good test of whether we're addressing the community goals. We had in our proposal, I have a slide if you want to see it, kind of the range of costs that we had with all the proposals. I want to say every one of the proposals was really good. I mean, there wasn't anybody that we felt couldn't do the firm. We just, we really felt really comfortable that this was the firm that we wanted to go with. Their proposal, and I think this was part of the discussion when the P and Z and the town councils here is like, why can't we do both, the high aspiration plan, we should be doing that? When you look at those numbers for this proposal, it came out to two hundred and twenty-eight thousand. Everybody knows we budgeted two hundred thousand. We've had discussions with Wayne Freeman. He is the principal in charge at CTA, so we've had discussions with him. We have kind of a plan to bring it down to the two hundred thousand. We just have to check in with Ryan and make sure everything kind of fits with that. There's a lot of different ways of citizen participation that they're proposing, and so I'll offer Giles an opportunity to say something, but again, we're kind of just looking, we're looking for a motion to select CTA, the CTA team, and to kind of move forward with this. So Giles, you want to add anything we'll brief for?
Yeah, I mean, we've, Connect One started, and Basalt has been here for ten years. Basalt's been absolutely terrific to us, and it's our home, and we've actually just closed on an office space in Willets. We're now anchored and glued to Basalt. We love this town, and we're so appreciative of the opportunities you give us through the RFP process. CTA approached us, and this was a, this was a winning combination from day one. We love to have fun. We love to engage the community. We feel like we're very strong at engaging the community and the Basalt community, and we thoroughly look forward to to working on the new master plan for Basalt. And we feel like we're going to bring a whole new level of energy and citizen participation. I know the citizens here are probably a little burnt out, and we're hoping to spark many, many fires to, not literally, obviously, because of the, you know, but some, some excitement back into the citizen community, and we're absolutely thrilled that you've chosen us for this, for this project, so thank you.
When do you get started?
How do we get started?
When?
We started in two thousand and ten.
No, 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 I'm talking about in the master planning process.
When do we get started?
How would you expect to roll it out?
Well, we're actually starting, hopefully, as soon as we can. We have it in our schedule to be, to be going, and really, we want to get, get the word out on the street and work with the PR group to say, there's a new master plan process afoot, and get ready because we're, because we're coming. So we're going to give people a little bit of time to let them know that this is coming down their their corridor, and we're going to be working with your, I think, PR studio to to help with that and and launch this exciting new endeavor, yeah. So so we're going to get the word out. That's the first thing we're going to be doing, yeah.
I just love to express gratitude to the committee doing full day of interviewing firms. That's some really heavy lifting for a very important project that we're undertaking. I think we may be sitting around a table, but inside I am jumping up and down and skipping around, and this is definitely a legacy project that is going to be undertaken. And so I'm all about invitations and setting something forth with a positive intention, and so may this be very clarifying and energizing and a very peaceful process.
Beautifully said.
Great.
Anyone else for a motion?
Mayor, I move the town council approves CTA as the firm to complete the master plan and direct staff to negotiate contract.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, looking forward to it.
Looking forward to seeing you guys again.
Yeah, someone?
Mr. Mayor, pretend, prior to entering the exec session, I have two things. One, I know that Jen may wish to disclose a potential conflict of interest with respect to the discussion on the Shining, Shining Mountain Way property. And then my my second note was that the subject matter of the second executive session, for the purposes of discussing with me related to taper restrictions, I wanted to clarify that it is taper restrictions with respect to the town's cigarette tax, so we'll want to include that in the, in the language of the motion.
I am going to recuse myself due to connection to an entity with the Shining Mountain property.
Have a good night.
I'll be waiting.
We'll get you when it's time to talk about the.
Great.
The taper stuff.
Do I need to say the numbers?
You do.
Do I need to say the numbers, though, for A, and then do I need to say the numbers again, and B? Because I know you said there was an A and B.
Right.
Can I say four A, four B? Or do I have to say two?
I'll go ahead and read it, and then somebody can say so moved. How about that? Does that sound good? Okay, I'll just do it the way I'll. So the proposed motion would be for town council to enter an exec session for the purposes of discussing the purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer, sale of property interests in accordance with twenty-four, CRS twenty-four six four oh two four A, more specifically to discuss the Shining Mountain Way property, and for a conference with the town attorney for purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions under CRS twenty-four six four oh two four B with respect to taper restrictions on the town cigarette tax.
Motion, what our town lawyer just said?
Your second?
Second.
Second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And will this session be recorded, sir?
Yes, the first.
Okay, so let me change tapes, please. But Ryan?